Time is 5:00 PM. Start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Some woman asylum, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, time for the reading to break down to the budget. Tonight's first item, discussion of possible action regarding the superintendent's proposed operating budget for 2025-2026.
I presented to you the budget last week, and we did receive some questions. So Kathy and I responded to the questions, typed them up, and I gave you a copy that was available in our Google share for you to review. And then I wasn't sure if there's any other questions that anybody has.
All right, so as board look at these questions. Most of these questions I actually wrote myself, only because I was curious and I thought we really should delve in very carefully. Anybody have any comments about these?
Well, that's gonna be my question was the first one. Would you propose for special education funding? Is that going to be enough, knowing that it's gonna be a tight year?
So every year we do budget based on our current needs and what we believe would happen in the future with our current students. So at that moment in time, we believe that it was accurate. We don't budget for what ifs. However, it's a volatile and dynamic situation.
So today, eighty-nine is the absolute number. We know for a fact that eighty-nine pairs is gonna cover special ed. We know that for a fact today. There's no IEP going to missing a pair that should have. It's a very finite number here, and that's why I'm asking.
Well, that tells you it's, that's more than likely to tell you that it's tied to a student. So we have, the way we keep track of our paras is we tie them either to students or a program. So that is the exact number tied to a student or a program. I remember some students leave, some students come in, you know. It doesn't always match up at all, but that's something to consider.
Well, it's good to know this number is reflective of a hundred percent coverage in the course.
Yeah, and it includes, we included current vacancies as well.
Oh.
If you remember on that chart.
Yes, 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 correct, correct.
So if all those vacancies are filled, you know, we'd be today. I think I-
That's the key word, to today.
Correct.
Absolutely. There are things that we're putting in place to help mitigate some of these situations, really looking at when can two students be with one para instead of one? Making sure we understand where the request for a one-to-one para is. That's significant needs, right? So we know in our behavioral programs and our medically fragile programs, that's usually given. But also being mindful when it's a parent request or, you know, that we're collecting data around the needs. And when do we lean off a one-to-one para? It's never good to, all of a sudden, you're going to middle school, you no longer get the para. The student needs a para in fifth grade, and we think they need the para in sixth grade. That para may need to go to sixth grade, you know. So we're really trying to be mindful of how we're using one-to-ones, and it should only be in extreme cases, so.
Mom? I'm fine with that. It's real time, it's real services, real people. I'm fine with that answer. Thank you.
With that said, I will say the Thursday before our budget meeting, on Tuesday, we received, you know, an added district student came into town. That student won't be coming to school here because they were residentially placed, which is a big cost. So those things happen at any moment.
Object 425, Destiny Library Services, folding machine and fax. So the reason why I asked a question was, I don't like the term level funded, don't disrespect anybody, but level funded means there's, in my opinion, not a hard look at it. That might be not the case here, and I'm not implying anything but. But what is Destiny Library Services? What is, I don't know, what is it?
I can speak on that.
Yeah, please.
So the Destiny library system is what all the schools use for the media centers. It has the inventory of their books, periodics. We've had Destiny since I've been here. So I know we moved to the cloud four years ago, five years ago. And that costs, I have the exact cost on my budget, and it goes up maybe five, six percent. But we've, and they use it for inventory of like the overhead projectors and stuff that they use in the library, might lend out to teachers and stuff. And it does, it keeps the invoice in for if a kid doesn't return a book, if there's money tied to it as well. And it also, they have the Chromebooks in there as well. Some of them use that to track it.
Okay, folding machines?
That I don't know.
We have folding machines in the fiscal office, and that's what used for, was used mainly for payroll stopping, but we have a lease on that, so it's not something that we can get out of until the lease is done. I think we have another year on that. But we also, if we have literature that needs to be folded, be sent out to parents, that's what the folding machine does.
Still use fax machines?
We do, we do. Frontier, yeah, we do.
A little surprised at that.
Well, only because they don't like you using email because it could compromise student data. So anytime that you have to respond to the state, you have to fax because they, it's more secure.
All right. I understood the comment about the telephone, object 540. I know, I get it. I'm just trying to understand. I understand clearly twenty-two percent increase in rates since the speaker 24. Why is our phone so high?
I don't know that answer because I wasn't part of that contract.
And if you look at your other explanation on page 27, the telephone lease is sixty-five, two ninety-one per year. This lease will be paid off in 2028. And then at that particular point, you know, whether the equipment needs to be replaced or not, but it is a seven-year lease, and that's how we get the voice over internet by using this method. And that was something the board was surprised about at the time that we did it. The twenty-two percent was, there was two years that were lower pricing, and then the rest of it will stay the same. So those will be level funded probably because in addition to this, you got Frontier, and you got the telephones in there, and they're pretty stable monthly.
Object 541, what are we actually mailing? I mean, I see what you said, letters, FLOI, special ed information, reports, con requests, FERPA vendor checks, purchase orders and other information. This is across the entire district?
Yep. So I, we do a lot of mailings in terms of that. So things that we mail to our attorneys when we go into litigation, things that we're mailing for other complaints. FOI, FOI is a big one too. We can't send something electronically, but special ed is the majority for sure.
And there's also parent information for the schools that come up here and be mailed out.
Six eleven, supplies instructional. I know we've talked about this, Kathy, over the years, you and I live. I appreciate the description here, includes crayons, copier paper, calculators. I get it, I agree.
And that six eleven, I mean, is for all encompassing, whether it be guidance, whether it be health services and whatever. So the six eleven is for all of the departments. So it's six eleven-
Entire district.
Right, for the entire district. So I mean, when you're looking at it and you look at the enrollment and it's less than two hundred per student, when you know you have some high-cost programs, culinary arts and art, the art program that, you know, costs those programs a little bit more, we don't look at that to be high. As a matter of fact, you know, level funding. I mean, if we have areas that we have supply numbers in that are short or come in higher, we may put some in that to the supply numbers just to supplement, to accommodate that.
You're comfortable with that three seventy-five?
I'd like it to go up, but I mean, we try to keep the budget as low as possible because, I mean, we do overspend it when we have other areas in the budget that we can offset to that.
Okay. Six forty-one, textbooks. Ninety-six dot, excuse me, ninety-six thousand dollars workbooks. Never thought about that. Thank you for that explanation. This is textbooks and workbooks, and the costs are primarily for consumables and K5, for reading and math, reading and math intervention materials, literature book, textbook replacements for missing or worn books. I guess I never thought that a workbook you tear a page out and bring home to your, I think.
Yeah, and they're expensive.
It just seemed, just seemed like a big number for a little workbook, but I get it.
Are there other vendors that we can use for those?
A lot of them are connected to our curriculum. So CKLA would use, you know, would use as your work.
Six forty-three, thank you for answering that. Also, I was paid, obviously, COVID relief funds. But just an objective question, do students actually use library periodicals still?
In fact, this is the GaleView, I believe, where they gave us actual data usage.
Yeah, so Julie Perry here at the high school, they've had GaleView for, I think it went back to 2014 or 15, when we asked her for data, hey, can you give us some usage? And it is being used. I was surprised, and she pulled the numbers right from the system. So we have those numbers.
It's not a budget breaker, don't get me wrong. It's just, it's like, we hear about technology and children wanna use their cell phones and iPads and Chromebooks and like, do we really actually use the periodicals? So it's kinda nice actually to hear.
Those are online, they're around, they're online.
Yeah, they're online.
But they're actually looking at it, that's my point. Like, they're actually looking at it.
I believe Julie goes in, sorry, goes into the classroom and shows them how to do this, and they use it for whatever papers they do.
The numbers were impressive. She shared the numbers, and they were impressive.
All right, we had, so Kathy, a little more explanation on the transportation health insurance. I was trying to understand why student BOAG and special ed are all unique. I see your explanation could do.
Well, it's, as you say, I mean, some of these are just allocations in the budget because the state requires us to report.
Right.
So we'll take one driver maybe with the cost for BOAG, and in special ed, we will just allocate based on the cost of salary sometimes or how it was budgeted. We know what the insurances are. The drivers actually punch in and punch out, whether it's regular ed or special ed, but the insurance is just something that is allocated within those functions. It doesn't, you know, it, when we looked at the insurance, we say, okay, well, how many drivers would you have at a full staff? And we know what the insurance premium is per hour at a thirty-seven point five hour per week. So then we allocate it amongst those functions. So I mean, it's not a science by any way, shape or form because we don't now have drivers that are specified as special ed drivers and regular ed drivers. They're really kind of in the pool, but they punch in based on those descriptions of what they have, so. And we wanna allocate some insurances over there because it's required for us to maintain equity in the special ed. So we have to show that we are, we can't cut special ed down because in our, I'm trying to think of the word, what it's called, maintenance of effort. When we have the IDEA, we have to show maintenance of effort. So we wanna have some of those costs allocated over to the special ed department.
Can I just ask on the six thirteen and six twenty-eight, those things, supplies, non-instructional?
Six pub is mainly like in the offices and whatnot. Six thirteen is maintenance.
Yes, it says building and bus garage maintenance supplies. Is that different from the supply and bus garage?
But six twenty-eight is usually transportation. This should, most of this, six twenty-seven, most of the, six thirteen is building, it's not really the bus garage.
Okay.
It's maintenance, yeah, that's maintenance in the buildings. The six twenty-eight is the transportation. We'll make that note.
So six sixteen, the supplies for extracurricular, Kathy? Forty thousand?
Yeah, that's just the normal equipment that you need for extracurricular as for baseball, footballs. That's where the uniform numbers come out of. There's a lot of, just the normal, I mean, if you're having the same sports every year, then you're gonna replace the same, you know, the same things every year. And then the sports, athletic trainers' supplies come out of there also.
I will say in speaking with Tim, he is also very strategic on when he places an order because it's very expensive, and this has been level funded or even decreased, it looks like, a little bit ago, so.
I think it's modest for the number of sports.
He monitors it really well.
Forty grand, I think that's a very modest number for the number of sports at school. So I'm not complaining about that at all. I'm actually kind of impressed that he can do that for forty K.
I think it gets harder and harder for him every year based on the number.
I think what saved, what saved that is with the logo change and the uniforms were all replaced.
That was a big one. That was the big one right there.
Yeah. But those will come back in. Those will come back in.
The officials for games, do they come out of that same one?
They come out of, we do have officials, and that usually is one that does run into the negatives because we don't know what the gate receipts are. And at that particular point, we just have to look for offsets in other places to accommodate that. Officials usually do run into the negative. But that is under thirty-two hundred officials. Under four-four-seven. We have thirty-two, seven, sixty, but I guarantee that that, with the middle school sport and whatnot, it does become in the negative, and it should be increased, but we have not. We just, always tested.
Just about forever, it's been under.
And it's still, who may have done it.
Very nice explanation on object four ten, electricity. It's a hard number, thinking we have our own solar farm. That's a hard number.
And the delivery charges are killing us. I mean, we are, Willie started a great job working with Eversource trying to mitigate and look at why kilowatts are going up and whatnot. And so I think we'll have more information as we go through. And we're also working with Tradition to make sure that we're leadered in the correct pricing. That is a hard one. And with the efficiencies, it also increases the cost until the efficiencies are paid off.
All right, anybody have any questions about these questions that were passed out? I appreciate the explanations. I think these are little, right, as tight as you can get them. I appreciate the effort on all of you in administration and central office making this happen. Advertising, we talked about that? We did not, that was object five fifty. Is this tied to marketing costs, item five ninety? No, this is not the same as marketing costs. Okay, cool. Pushing in textbooks, okay. So let's talk about a few things. We've been talking about our meeting, we've talked about preschool, maybe possibly going to five days. The IT director has said he would like to see possibly, we need a new server or get a warranty. I know the finance department would like to upgrade after many, many years of not being in a position to upgrade or haven't upgraded for whatever reason for the next finance director.
Maybe we say that, sorry.
So I think these are things that we should, so part of our job as board is to advocate in the best interest of the district, superintendent and staff and children. Children number one, staff, et cetera. So I don't wanna leave these things out, I don't wanna leave these things out. Preschool is a hot item. I thought it was a very good conversation during the last meeting. I wonder how the board feels about it. If we're gonna add something to the budget, this is the time to add it. If it gets, if it gets taken away, then we'll deal with it at a future meeting. But.
Diane has one?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to update the board. So following our meeting last week, I did meet with the pre-K teachers at Oakdale and the principal and Teresa, who is our special education supervisor at the elementary level. And just so that they were aware of everything that was discussed in case, you know, how things roll. So I wanted to make sure they were aware, and I went over the three options that I had provided with you. And in talking with them, option three that was presented to you, which is five days a week, the hours are nine to one, which increases the student's instructional time from the current ten hours a week to twenty hours a week. And we talked about the cost for para educators, and we talked about the need for possibly additional teachers and the savings in transportation. In our conversation, they felt pretty good that it's a low probability that we would need an additional teacher. Now, there is the chance, because we don't know who's into town and who's out, but certainly, based on the numbers that they looked at with, to three, you know, the three-year-olds they evaluate, they're pretty sure halfway through the year, they're pretty secure where they're at. Additionally, being creative with the scheduling of the para educators where we could do some flex time would keep the six para educators at that part-time level, which means there would be no increase in their pay or additional insurance. So essentially, it looks like, as it stands right now, we could move to this option and save around six thousand dollars because of transportation. Again, we don't know what next year will bring. You know, you could, we could service more students when we're doing part-time sessions. But, you know, based on all that, that might be a motivating factor to, let's do it this year and see how it goes.
I know you also mentioned the total space.
Yeah.
We have an increase in preschool.
Yeah.
Would the savings still be there if we added? No.
No, well, if we had to hire another teacher, I had given you the cost because you have no idea whether they'll be on step one or step thirteen, right? So that's a difference between fifty-six thousand and ninety-four thousand. With that said, the state expanded the pre-K certification. So teachers that were certified K to three or K to six are seeing that pre-K certification on their certs. So the pool opened up for that possibility too. Before, it was very difficult to find pre-K teachers primarily because, you know, the hours and whatnot, but all, depending on the program. But also, it was a special certification.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, the three teachers on staff support option three?
Yes, and they happen to be here in the audience very interested in how it goes. But yes, I did meet with them. They under, I said, listen, if it is difficult mid-year, it's always difficult to find replacements. I saw the numbers wanna be capped at fourteen to sixteen. What if we can't find a replacement and you have twenty kids in your room? This is a gamble, and I want you to go into this with your eyes wide open. And just based on how many students they have picked up over the course of the year, they just feel like they're pretty solid and they think they'll be okay. But I said it here, no complaining later is what I said. So of course, if the numbers warrant another teacher, we'd have to do that, but it's not, it's mid-year sometimes because it's a challenge and they're aware of it. And they really like the benefit that it gives the children, and that's doubling instructional time, so.
No extra cost?
Actually, six thousand dollar savings that I'd like to keep for myself. In central office, not personally, but it is a savings.
It's the cost of the bus drivers.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, because they do that middle run that they wouldn't need to do. Yep, the hours worked out for the bus garage. Jill's there, oh, she's in the background. I met with Jill and Teresa, you know, the preschool teachers are here. They were definitely in favor and excited about this opportunity.
Were they concerned about the reason why we didn't have? Like, I mean, you said there was prep time or there was things that they had to do on that day off? Is that?
No, not with option three. Option two, there would be a concern if we did five days a week AM and PM. Yeah, but no, actually, option three really is probably the best for them, which will allow them to do their PPTs and everything once the students leave. It's still a finite window of time, but that's when they would schedule. And it gives them the prep time that doesn't work out for them on the other days, yeah.
So as a board, do we think? I'm all in favor of this. How's the board feel about this?
I emailed them out, I think.
Yeah.
I saw them online.
Oh, I did email, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did put them out, but you could take my copy.
So option three is more service for less money?
Yes.
More, more kids or more, I mean, the same number of kids or more time?
Right, right. It's based on the number of students. Right, okay.
We don't normally go this way.
Yeah.
It's a little, it's a little odd here.
And it may pose a question for us next year if there's, you know, another ten students coming or, you know, but I think that would be the case anytime.
So do you determine how big the program is? Or you have, you, you, you have to serve everyone, so.
With special needs.
Right.
And the program has the, you have to have a peer for them. So if we test four students that qualify, it's just not four students coming to the program, it's eight students coming to the program.
And right now, do you run the class, run the class optimum size or set a maximum?
I don't remember, I'd have to look at that. But right now, we have about seventy students, I think, sixty-nine students? I'd have to look at it.
So if you go to this next year, then you, you know, how many students? If you got new students, how many students would?
Yeah, if you look at the second page, Bonnie, I did the projected numbers for next year. I just don't remember them off the top of my head. But I think it averaged about twelve maybe per class. So that's the number thirty, maybe?
So you would, so how many students would have to come into the district to? But if you had like three more students coming?
We'd be fine. And thank you for the willingness to make that happen.
Donna? Tiffany, we're up, ready? Tina? Fully in favor, I, I think this is wonderful news. I think this is great.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll just share that my understanding is that the teachers have been advocating for this actually. So it was music to their ears, I will say, when it came up, am I right? So they really have been looking to make the move. So thank you for just pushing it along. Thanks, and happy getting that.
Thank you, Lisa. No, Lisa, Lisa? Yes, thank you. All right, so I think we all like you to, we agree on that.
Okay.
Okay, good. Wow, preschool done. All right, let's talk about the server. Nick?
Yep. All right, so-
All right, so right around COVID time, we got two new servers, or I should say cluster of servers at the high school and at Tile. At the time when we purchased them, we got a five-year license with support. And we're told that when that expires, we should be able to go another three years. So we're going to expire this coming budget season. And reached out to get the quotes with E+, which is, has the state contract for this. And they came back with two options. One option was three years of licenses with one year of hardware support. Because they're no longer going to do the hardware support of the server because it was end of life. Or then that was for around 15, or 1,000, no, let me start again. $115,000 to do that option. Or the other option was $46,000 for one year of hardware support and the license. I quickly responded, wait a minute. This is ridiculously high, what is going on here? And then they said, that is the cost, that's what it is. So immediately, I started exploring what are other options? And looking at different options, we could get a new, so we can get a new system and spend it out for five years because the one thing I've been hearing is level funding. We want to make your budget more flat because IT budget seems to have spikes in it. Because we wait until we absolutely need something. We need to purchase things in a, in a plan so that it stays flat, which we know it's going to increase a little bit over time. So this, so I was looking at a solution where it would cost us approximately $31,000 for the next five years. That would be a new server here at the high school and at Tile with the hardware and the licenses. At the end of the five years, we have the option of doing à la carte, buying the licenses and the, and the hardware. I am pushing that, I want it in writing that we can definitely do that. I don't want in five years, we have a surprise. Or we renew a new contract with maybe this company or a different one to continue this, do another five years. So my recommendation is that we go that way because otherwise, if we keep what we have and we do the $46,000 versus the three years, which is very dangerous. So that means if a hard drive goes, we don't have hardware support. We're going to have to hope that we can find the parts. Technology is changing very quickly at this time. And I think it's going to put us in a dangerous situation. When I'm talking about the servers here at the high school, they're our core servers. They're what runs the network. Without them, we won't have a network. We wouldn't have active directory, DNS, DHCP. Our camera system wouldn't work, it ties everything together. And honestly, we should be replacing that every five years. Thus, at the elementary level where we have one server, we push those to seven, eight years. We go as far as we can until the warranty cost or the hardware cost exceeds the cost of going to something new. I'm still looking at other options to see if there's some more cost-effective. Also, what's tied into this is VMware. We use that for our virtualization. Our company bought out VMware and they discontinued education prices. They're treating school districts as corporate now. And the, the prices are extremely high. Other IT directors here in Connecticut, it was the topic again of what are you doing for your servers? We have VMware only works with this type. So other school districts are going through this as well, of looking at different options. We definitely have to do something virtual, we have to virtualize our servers. Otherwise, we got to buy 25 physical servers to do what we do on the virtual side. And I can go into detail with that at another time. But that's the background of the, the warranty versus brand-new servers.
So when would you need that put into the budget? For this year or next year?
It has to go, the license, everything expired next year, so that's why it's in this budget coming up.
So you support a warranty over replacing the server?
No, 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 replace the servers.
Okay, I want to make sure I heard that correct.
Yeah, yes, for 31, around 31,000 for the next five years.
It's the reason why I'm asking this out of sequence, I know this falls under capital.
Yeah.
Because now we're honing in on operating budget, we've got to make sure that the staff has exactly what they need to execute. That's the reason why I had you step up and answer that, because I want to know.
Yep.
We have the server under the operating budget, $31,000 under the operating budget, under capital. It's an ongoing.
So, so why, that's a good question, why is it under capital?
Because we, we take any approach, if it's, if it's a necessary equipment for the operation of the, the school system, that it should be, as like with our computers, be part of our operating budget because we need those to operate. So we put servers throughout our whole time in here. What we don't do is the network, like the, the switches and things that are in the buildings, that goes into the capital, but we have to put in servers unless it's a major, you know, like 50 or 60,000 dollars because we need it. So I mean, if they don't fund in the capital, we don't, we have a little bit more control here because we have to find other places if we needed to get this server in here to make that cost neutral. Yeah, ongoing.
So I support replacing the server, how's the rest of the board feeling?
Yeah, we go in on new servers. Makes more sense.
I think where the board's at, that's what's going to work.
It sounds like the new server is the optimum path.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's what's been put into the operating budget.
Right, right. Want to make sure we're all in agreement because this is what we're passing forward to the town. So I want to make sure we're all in agreement that we want to do this. Let's talk about, we'll stay on the IT side for a second. Let's talk about the upgrade to finance.
So, do you want to?
You can. No, okay, I, I'm going to go back to the history just a little bit. So last spring, if you recall, we had an issue with our system, the server. It died, we didn't have payroll or anything, we got it back up because of our backups. We were able to virtualize that server and get it running. I asked us when we were doing this, we, the vendor was like, do you want to go to the cloud right now? And at the time, we, we had to get up and running. We didn't have time to go to the cloud because we had to get payroll out that Friday. And they brought it to our attention that we're not developing the, their software any further because they're putting all the development in the cloud. They would do security patches for the server so that we wouldn't have to worry about that side of things. Going forward, we've run into, the most recent one is that we emailed pay stubs. And we ran into a problem with Office 365 and when we contacted support, they're like, oh, we discontinued that. You have to use Google now. So we had to go through, set up various things. And Kathy and John can tell you, it's not a smooth thing, there, there are some glitches and stuff. But my fear is as we continue going down this path, are we going to find more things that are going to come up that are not going to work? Because they're not developing this anymore. They have to up their security and as they're upping their security, is it dropping things off? So the cloud piece is, it's coming to us and eventually, we're going to have to move to that. And going to the cloud piece, we do get some enhancements that we don't have. So when you go to the cloud, you get the employee portal, which we don't have. And the player portal would allow employees, they could go see their, their pay subs, they could do.
No more email, right?
No more email.
Because that's archaic.
Yeah.
Totally archaic.
Yep.
All right.
They could see, they could file their W2, or get their W2s, put their, do the W4s. It would actually save a lot of time for the payroll technician who has to constantly answer the questions of, what, how much sick time do I have? Even though it's printed on the pay stub, you, you still get these questions. Now, you can say, hey, go to this, go to your, your portal and you can pull that information. And also for myself and my IT department, to have a server like that with that type of information on our network and I, myself and myself, we're not certified cybersecurity engineers. To have it go up to with, with our vendor, that would be huge because they have those experts. They have a better eye on the stuff. There's been reports, there was a school district, I think it was Ohio, that has the exact same thing that we have that got hit with ransomware, information stolen. So these actors out there look for school districts like us that we have our little local thing because they know our network security is not going to be the same as a huge agency piece. So there's a lot of factors of why I highly recommend that we move to the cloud. It scares me with the cybersecurity thing piece. I mean, there's always a chance, I mean, Power School did get breached as well and they're a huge system. So it can happen to, to anyone. But if we move to the cloud, like Power School's handling the notification to give everyone the free credit reports and everything. If that happened at our site and it was us, now we have cyber insurance, so we'll be covered. But it's still a big expense and our premium will probably go up years after that.
What's the cost of this?
So, do you have it written down or?
Yeah, it's 1,100.
What's it available?
Yeah, I would, I would advocate for that happening as soon as possible as it would make sense to me to have a new business manager come in and learn our system just to turn around to learn a new system on July 1st.
But I, I do think that July 1st makes more sense only because you have to do setup. So you have to, they have to do the setup with you and get those people affiliated to it. So, and we end up fiscal year at the June 30th and so it makes more sense to me to, to do it July 1st because the systems are very similar. It's just a matter of who's hosting the, the software. The system is very similar. It does allow you for the efficiencies of those employees being able to look at all that information on the system. But it's going to take a little bit of time for the setup and whatnot to go through and they're really busy closing the fiscal year and whatnot, so.
I, yeah, I don't know your job perfectly, but to me, they learn two different ways, completely different from each other. But I trust.
They're naturally different.
So Nick, tell me, if we were to order this tomorrow, because we have the liberty of doing it, we have a 2% account, superintendent can just pull the money, order it, done, done deal. When would we have it?
I would have to reach out to them and see what their schedule is. Like, we can definitely get, like, I have the quote already, so literally, we can sign, cut the PO and have it in, have it to them next day. But when we actually do this, because we have to work with their schedule and see, I don't know what their schedule's like. I don't know if they can say, hey, we can do it next week or they're going to say, we're booked until May, June, July. I'm not sure. When I talked to them, I said to them, I don't know when this is going to go through. We might have to wait till May, see where the budget ends up and.
I don't want to wait to see where the budget ends up. That's why I'm advocating to the board tonight, that we use our 2% because this is a very important piece right here. You said a number of things that are important, more efficient, more effective, more secure. And we have the ability to buy this amongst, but that's obviously a team decision tonight. Okay, Lisa?
I have a question. So just clarify a little bit for me, cloud-based, so the software, like the town uses Munis. What is the name of this program? What do we use to operate, like, do our payroll, do accounts payable, budgeting? What do we use?
All right, so before I, I say the name, I purposely don't use vendor names.
Okay.
Because I don't know if we like, I know it's like, for some of our cybersecurity stuff, we're using vendor names and the practice is not to use names like that. But I know we've said it in the past, but, so we use School ERP Pro, which is made by Tyler Solutions, which does, they make Munis as well.
Okay, so is that a good program that we're using or could that be better? Is that old technology? If we're going to operate.
I, I'm not an expert on it, I just know Munis has historically have been much more expensive. But I'm not the expert of knowing which package would be better. I would actually lean on Kathy and John who are in that role and what they've used for.
So does this software do budgeting?
Yes.
It does do budget.
Yeah, it would do the, the budget, the payroll.
Well, I have to be honest, like, I always am, I'm not crazy about the budget. I like check runs and stuff. Is there a software upgrade where we can get a better reporting? Really clear-cut reporting? What's in the budget, what's been spent in it? You know?
I don't know because that's outside my realm. Because I just make sure it runs on our server, the, the ins and outs of the reports and stuff. Can you make different reports? I would lean on Kathy or other people that.
So you don't think we need to upgrade anything with the software? You love that, you like that?
I, I like the software, but I've worked with it for a number of years, so.
And how old, how many years have you been working with it?
Well, it started, when I started, we had an independent person. So since I moved over to, I, I think I've worked with it for at least 20 years.
20 years old?
Oh, no, it's not 20 years old, it's been upgraded along the way. No, 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 they constantly have upgrades.
Oh, yeah, and it's been through, so it used to be owned by a company in New Hampshire, it was unified.
Unifund?
Unifund. And then Tyler bought them and was, then merged with another company, Infinite, I think, was it Infinite?
Infinite Vision.
Infinite Vision. And then now they rolled into School ERP Pro.
Constantly upgraded. I mean, he gets to every, yeah, I mean, we do W2s until we upgraded systems and whatnot. Although that would be taken away in the cloud version, which is nice for his department because I mean, and it will make us more current just because they, they do it system-wide, so.
Like, if you were a new school district and you went to them and say, hey, I want to buy School ERP Pro and we're hosting it, they're going to, they're going to tell, we don't, we don't sell it anymore.
Right.
So your, your only option is the, is the cloud. And that's when, that's when they, they're phasing it out. And I can tell when I do the security updates on it. I used to go and do it and I was telling Kathy this last time I did it, it used to be like 500 downloads. The last one I did was 43 downloads. That's it. So the less school districts are using it, I, I mean, would you as a, if you were the, the CEO of the company, would you keep investing lots of money keeping that up? If you have everyone going to the cloud? That was the do-tell the last time I was doing that.
Okay, and just one more thing, talking about the 2%, I can't get off my mind, Kathy, what you said a couple of months ago about, or a couple of meetings ago about how we're going to end up in the red.
For this year?
Okay, so we're going to be in the red, we're going to have to get the 2% fund. I don't want to jeopardize that fund.
Well, I, I'm thinking right now, I think I just looked, it was 555 before they added the additional monies that we had at the end of last year's money. So there is funds there, I don't think we're going to have to hit it to the degree of what's in the 2% account.
Okay.
So, you know, I mean, and that's what it's there for and, you know, and the other thing is a lot of the deficits are coming from special ed tuition, which has an excess cost frame associated with it. And that might lead to conversations with the town on how we effectively maybe move the excess cost over to the Board of Education so it doesn't look like we have that significant of an increase when there's revenues to offset that or talk with the town to appropriately budget for excess costs. But those are areas that we do have rights to get if we go into a deficit in the special ed.
So you're comfortable with us taking from the 2%?
To this level, I am. I would, I wouldn't want to go higher right now.
Just want to make sure.
Those might be more comfortable. But I, I think this is important enough to invest in.
So, so the reason why I advocate for this, obviously, is because I'm a former councilor and also a resident and a board member. This money was allocated by the town at one time for the school district. And I don't like to sit on a pile of money. And we, I'm not saying we have a pile, but I think it shows good faith when we spend part of that 2% because previous town councils have allocated this to us. And in good faith, they've allowed us to have it in the past and I just think it's.
Right, it's a good initiative.
It's a good initiative to, to do that.
And there's a lot of.
Yes.
Sorry, I have a couple of questions on. So is this like a cloud-based upgrade? Is it basically the same system? Is the data able to be transferred?
Yeah, so what they would do is, there would be like two or three days from my understanding where we wouldn't be able to do anything because they're going to come in and they're going to take, it's a SQL backend, so they're going to take all the SQL databases and they're going to put them into the new, new system. The new system, they have two versions of it that we, we get. One version mimics what we currently have, so it's an easier learning curve. And then they have more of a, the website GUI interface piece for it. So for the two or three days, and this is with, they come across no issues, they bring that data over and they would map it properly to where it needs to go.
Okay, and then my other question is, this is 51,000, is that like an annual license? Or is that a one-time? I mean, or, so.
The annual maintenance fee, what was that, Nick?
Yeah.
Because we already pay maintenance fee too, so it would be a net. It was about 60,000 a year.
But we pay.
But we already pay. But we do pay about 35,000. So it would be an increase annually.
But we already pay, but we do pay about thirty five thousand, so it would be an increase annually for that.
But it's a much stronger system, much stronger system. And it does give the employees the benefit of, you know, instead of calling us and asking for their pay history, they can go in and just generate all those reports themselves.
Okay, so it's fifty one thousand this year plus the thirty five thousand extra.
It's not extra.
And that would, or the licensing, annual licensing fee, he says thirty thousand above what we pay.
So it'd be sixty, sixty thousand every year after the first year. Because the first year, there's the onboarding costs and then there's some credit that will come back because we're not going to pay for support and service on a server that we no longer have or system. So that will get piled in, so they gave us a number of what that would be. So when we fully pull the trigger on that, that number, like if we do it earlier, we're going to get a bigger credit from, so that number will go down slightly. How much? I don't know. I would have to look at the spreadsheet to determine that, but.
So the fifty one thousand is a one time, but then slight increase every year for maintenance.
And that means it's moderate.
Yeah.
Which we want to be.
Yeah, so having that employee portal.
Does the fifty one one include the training of the staff to use this new?
Yes.
Thank you.
But I'm not Nick.
Is the portal run by the school or the company that we are going to work with?
It's incorporated with the company that we're with, so everything's just housed in their system. So everyone would get a username and password and they would be able to access it.
And you look at their pay stub and all that stuff. That's like what everybody does except us.
Yeah, so and if you guys want to see a demo, we can set up a demo. They're very willing to show demos to whoever wants.
Do they contact the company if they have an issue with seeing their information or do they contact you?
It would probably depend, like if they can't get into the system, we're probably coming to myself or the, probably the payroll technician to make sure. Do they have an account? Do we set it up properly? And there's probably going to be two FA and I'm not going to like, some people struggle with two FA. So that part, like, but if there's a problem, they're probably going to reach to us because they're probably going to think it's, like they're going to come to Kathy and V, well, not Kathy, but whoever the next business manager would be like, hey, my paycheck's not right. It's probably more like what's going to come out, or you're not taking the right holdings out, stuff like that. But if there's a true problem, they would come to us and then we would probably reach out to them and say that, hey, we have this issue. And hopefully, we won't have that, but if we do, it'll probably be more than just one person. It might be a bigger issue if there is.
How's the rest of the board feel about two percent after hearing from Kathy and the description from Nick?
Sounds like to me a proper use of the funds. I mean, we want to have it done. We want to have it done as efficiently and in my opinion, as soon as possible. Yeah. Because right now, the fifty one thousand isn't in term year budget, so we have to.
No, it's not. Right, we need to fund it, but obviously it's critical. Important, I should say critical. Okay.
Would that have to go on the next board meeting?
I'm just going to say it should be on the eighteenth meeting. Put an item on the eighteenth meeting, Superintendent Nick. Please dial this in nice and tight. You have two weeks to get this all exactly the way it needs to be. And we will vote on it that evening and then you can go forward, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you, board, for your support on that. I think it's the best thing, one of the best things we're doing. All right, let's talk about class size. Are you comfortable with your class size, Superintendent?
Yeah.
Okay, so I only ask because there's some teachers not coming back and, you know, resigning, and I just want to make sure we're all good.
Right, so again, that's something that can switch with the change with the influx of students coming in. And again, we make decisions based on a snapshot in time. So at the time that we were doing the budget monthly, we looked at our enrollment numbers and we were comfortable with the changes that we made when I presented the budget. You never know what can happen and as has been reported by our administrative staff. In the summer, we can have a huge influx of students. I think we heard how tile increased by, you know, forty students over the summer, so anything can happen. But again, trying to present a responsible budget and making changes where we could. Things can change.
I just want to make sure we're all clear, the board's clear that you and your staff are comfortable with classroom size and staffing and stuff, okay? All right, does anybody have any other questions on the operating budget?
I do want to, if it's okay, just mention the recommendations that I shared with the board last week. Along with, one of them was that new server. And I had mentioned a couple of other things where I said I recognize the tough situation we're in, but I just want to keep this on your mind for future consideration. An L teacher is something, I think, a multilingual English language learner teacher is going to be very critical for our students as they come into our district with more complex needs. So that was something that I want to make sure everybody's aware of, that when we're in better budgetary times, it's going to be something that we really need to consider. Our athletic director did request a volleyball coach for freshmen. I didn't include it in the budget. However, that is something that enables even more students to participate in sports. And that was for freshman volleyball. And I do just want to stress how, you know, wonderful it is that when our freshmen are coming to a high school from a middle school, that they're engaging in extracurricular activities.
What's the cost associated with that, Superintendent?
I believe it's around four thousand dollars. So I want you to be aware. And then the last thing that was on my list that, to share with you just so that you hear it, but not, I recognize it wouldn't be something that happened with this budget, is the need for an HR director at central office level. Right now, I will tell you, it has consumed much more of my time than I even thought it would do. And then on top of it, it's pocketed in areas such as Kathy's business office. Jenmae does a lot on my behalf and then the things that I have to address as superintendent. So I just think when I look at all other school districts in this immediate area, in our DURG, you know, every, which way, most districts do have a dedicated HR director. And I think that would go a long way to streamlining our process, modernizing our process and keeping us current with legislation and law, which has taken a lot of my time this year. So we just figured you might need to hear it a couple of times before it becomes a reality. But that, I think, from a central office, we're an extremely lean team at central office and we do a lot to support our administrative team, but that's something that I think would be beneficial for the district in the long run. So I just wanted to make you aware of that.
What's the approximate salary for an HR position?
I would say that really depends, right?
Right.
On what we're looking to do. It could probably range just salary, you know, ninety thousand up to a hundred and fifty, depending on, many districts will bring in a certified administrator to do this where they overtake a lot of the heavy duty, you know, the whole gamut. And then others may have a, you know, supervisor in that area that's handling F M L A but being overseen by someone. So it's really just how we want to set it up.
Is this a service we can share with the town? They have an HR director and they're in a much smaller budget than we are. I don't know, I mean, you know, we need to get creative. We really need to start becoming creative. We really do. I don't know if that's the answer, but it's worth a conversation.
Yeah, it could be worth it. I never even considered it. I do know it's a highly confidential position and having it go outside the walls of central office can be scary. Not to say nobody can be trusted. I'm sure people can be trusted. I never really engaged in that thought at all, to be honest, so it's, I'm sure it's worth it.
The thing I like about HR director, it's a, it takes out any bias that someone else is filling in for that position. That's a, that's a specific role. I think the superintendent makes a really good point here. It would alleviate some workload on herself and her assistant and her, it is a lean central office. I talked to a lot of board of eds across the state. We are very lean. I mean, we are, we're on skim milk. We are lean. I cannot emphasize to you, almost everybody I've talked to as an HR director, they have multiple assistants in payroll, assistant payroll, assistant this, so I think, I appreciate you advocating for that. I think Lisa makes a very good point. Get creative, try to figure this out, have a discussion. I like that very much. Volleyball coach, I think, is a no brainer for it. It's four grand. We're talking forty seven million dollars. It's absolute no brainer for me.
But Kathy, but it is offset by the savings.
Right, it's, I was just going to say it's offset, so we still have a net, net savings of two K. Right?
Two K.
But I mean, right, I just, I think.
Right.
Right? I think it's just a no brainer to get the athletic director. I, that's just.
I think this is great, but we don't really have a real number.
No.
Really? No, that's a problem that's happening. We don't have a number. I mean, it's great to talk about all this, but we just don't have a number.
Well.
You know, I don't know. I mean, I love that idea, but we don't have a number.
For the volleyball coach?
No, for, for women.
But the requirement is, is you put forth a budget that you are.
Yes.
Supporting and advocating for.
Yes.
What the town does is they then balance that with the town's ability to pay.
Yeah.
And they'll come back and yes, you're right, that's when the hard work comes. So I mean, you may say you're putting a volleyball coach in now, but it may not last.
Right, right.
I love these ideas. They're all great, great, but we don't have a number.
No, but if we don't ask, we definitely don't get it.
No question.
So I'd rather advocate for four thousand dollars. I do like the conversation about HR. Other board members have thoughts about HR position. Tina, you were in that.
Yeah, I think HR is critical. It's a compensation benefits, it's employee relations. It's, it works coinciding with legal, you know, they have a lot of, I have a great deal of respect for HR people. It's a very difficult job. I will say, just to that point, just things you're not even thinking of, they can turn into a legal situation. And, you know, also trying to use, you know, curiosity gets me in trouble, right? Like I'm like, oh, this sounds old. I don't know, let me check. Oh, no, it's not even compliant anymore, you know, and things like, just because I'm new to it with different eyes. And I just think of relying on the attorneys for some of this stuff saved us a lot. But it took a lot of time, you know, just checking into things. So even with, because of my involvement with something like F M L A, we had some training done. And really, as a supervisor, I shouldn't be the one talking about F M L A where my direct reports. It's just, right, it's, just think about it. That's how it's done here because there's nobody else to do it, right? And those are the things like we're trying to tighten up with what we have and we will, and we've done a lot of work. It's impressive how much work we've done to put in systems and structures. But it wasn't what you were thinking of in the middle of budget season for your first time or things like that. So it's the little things that really could have gotten us with some things. Outdated contracts, things that are up to state statutes, things that a, you know, HR director could be on top of.
Yes.
If you had an HR director, so you would be consulting with attorneys less, would that, does that save money?
Yeah, yeah, probably would save money, yeah, long term. I think initially, maybe that we would still need to use the attorney just to find out what things we could continue to use or not. But like one of the things would be using the attorneys for our unaffiliated contracts to make sure they're current. And they're, they're still offering, you know, we go through negotiations with other contracts so that we know that they're current and, you know, they align with what else is happening in the industry, but other places they don't. So I think initially, we'd use the attorney and it'd be the same process what we're doing now, but over time.
Would it be, say, if we can?
I, by the time I get an HR director, probably not because I'll be going. But no, I mean, and it also depends again, when I gave that range, if I get somebody who has experience, it's going to be a lot easier versus somebody training, I'm open to either one, but one, like the salary may be offset the first year by the need for attorneys to look at some things.
How much are we budgeting for special ed director this year?
I believe it was one. About a hundred and sixty nine thousand for just the salaries. Yeah, and then the insurance, it's depending, we factored it, what?
It's a hundred and sixty nine thousand.
For just the salary, yeah.
One sixty nine or one fifty?
One sixty nine.
One sixty. So again, talking to other, to answer your question, and you're more familiar with this than I am, talking to other districts, Bob probably knows this too. Special ed directors command a lot of money. But they also command it because they're very competent, seasoned experts in their field. The ones that get all the money are the very, very best. I know three school districts right now looking for a special ed director, so.
I mean, perfect example, our former special ed director showed us what all she does until there's three meetings to go through it all.
Right, it's one, is that enough money? Is one sixty nine enough money, right? Talking to other districts, they're paying up to, listen, this is our district, but they're paying up to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for some special. But they're big districts. We're a small district. These are districts that have eight, ten thousand kids in the district, big districts in the state of Connecticut. So I understand why, and they have multiple supervisors. They don't have two, they have like four or six. These are big, big districts. So I, it's an excellent question. Is one sixty nine enough?
Well, we need to look at the, because it's so important.
It is so important.
Right.
So if one sixty nine is not enough, we need to look at that because we really need to try to recruit the best. In addition to one sixty nine, there is a TSA associated with that. It's just not factored in the same place in the budget, so it's not, the compensation package is higher than the term.
Any other questions about the operating budget? All right, I'll make the motion that we approve the superintendent's proposed operating budget for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six in the amount of forty seven million, two hundred and seventy seven thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and forty one cents as proposed.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Are you done? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Excellent job, Superintendent. Thank you. All right, next item, discussion of possible action regarding the Board of Education's five-year capital plan, twenty twenty five to twenty thirty.
So just confirming, everybody received their. So we had quickly reviewed some of the, the projects and I think in this meeting, I don't know if you want to do the whole five years or if you just want to focus on, on next year's requests. But the only change from the prior one was we did put the Mohican flooring and the abatement for the flooring together as one project because that would meet the minimum prevailing wage requirement and it's one that you can't separate for that purpose. And we added the tile hydraulic lift and upgrades to the passenger vehicles based, passenger elevator based on a quote that was given by the vendor who maintains it because of the length of the age of the. it because of the length of the age of the elevator and the needs for having difficulty of getting repairs or parts for that. But with that, you know, if, the first request is two big buses from Teresa, transportation coordinator. She said she didn't need other vehicles other than the two big buses. They got a quote for bus, so we have that in there. And that's just a normal cycle of what they have indicated to maintain that fleet is pretty much two buses. And then we have to add in small buses along the way or some vans. So that was her request, the Palmer roof, which...
Hang on a second, Kathy. So, so pretty much the rotation is two buses get scrapped.
It is.
So it's, it's, it's a, it's a net, net gain of zero?
It's, yeah, it's not adding to the fleet, it's just...
Take the two out and put it to it.
Right, it's just to refresh it.
Refresh it. That bus garage looks excellent when you drive up there now. It's all bluebirds, no junk, no garbage. I think it's rusted.
And we wanted to get...
Very impressive.
Wanted to get away from the lease, because the lease costs money on the interest. So we tried to say, okay, instead of leasing, let's just purchase buses.
Understand.
And keep it flat. And then the Palmer roof, you know, that, that's one that we definitely need to have done. We're having significant leaks in that roof. Well, we're having more leaks in that roof and maintaining it with having them come in and do some work. If Willie, you want to talk about that a little bit? But it's kind of just band-aided. We really need to get into having the school appropriated roof replacements, so we can address it properly. Thank you.
Yes, so when we had the ice start to melt in the Palmer roof, the roof over the, what is that, the home area?
Yeah, yeah, color location treatments.
Yep. So it started, it started thawing out, and we had the roofers there after, after the fact, and they peeled back all the gravel that's up there. And called me up right away. I stepped on the roof and the insulation underneath was absorbing the water. So the system is completely failed. It no longer serves its purpose. It's a thirty-plus-year-old roof, so that's what we're dealing with right now. I moved, I did give them the okay to move forward and get the roof done, because, I'll repair that patch, because it's, it's very important for the education of these to move forward.
So it's compromised a hundred percent, fix it?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's band-aided right now.
It's band-aided, okay. What else can, one second, what else can you tell us about the roof? I mean, we know the skylights are there and they're slate. I mean, a lot of things going on down there. Kind of a complicated arrangement.
Would you take the skylights out?
Uh, the skylights were, they were also included in the, in the proposal to be replaced. We had significant talks with the mayor as well, with the masons. So that's something that they wanted to keep. So when we had the architect write up the specs, they included replacements in the skylights.
Typically, skylights leak over time, don't they?
Yes, they do. And with a thirty-year roof, you know, it's, it's bound to have the...
So I had...
I'm sorry?
I don't know why we're gonna, I don't, I think we should take them out, no? I mean, why?
That, that would be a decision that the board will have to make if they want to remove it.
And when they bid it, they can bid it both ways and see what, you know, whether or not it makes sense or not. But I mean, right now, I think that they said that it was very dark up there and the skylights just against the environment. Okay, so we could put lighting, because skylights don't really offer too much lighting on them. They've never done that. But we could maybe increase the light compared to the lights, right?
Right.
It's an option, right?
Right.
So, and that would probably provide better lighting.
It could, it could. I'm not gonna disagree with you.
Right.
It could, but we don't, we don't utilize that as top floor. So that would be something that masons will have to look into.
I think it would be worth getting up, trying to build trades. I mean, I, since skylights...
Well, we had the ARBA funds, and we turned the funds back to the town. It was sixty-five thousand. We turned it back last year for the skylights. So I agree with you. Let's get it both ways. Thank you, Kathy.
The next one is a bus garage. By statute, we're required to replace that. We do believe that once we get funded, we could apply to state grant. And we do believe that that might be something that would be eligible for state grant, which would give us, I think it's about a seventy percent reimbursement. So that is something by statute, because they're undergrounded, they do have to be replaced within a timeframe. And next year would be that year. So that is something that's necessary to be happening in the capital.
So we can use it until it expires, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next one is Nick's, which is the wireless project at the high school. You want to continue on that? We have thirty-nine-nine in that one.
Yep.
And that's been quoted.
So here at the high school, we need to replace the wireless. It's just the wireless access points that we have are coming to end of life. They've done a great job. We went out to bid using the E, with the E-rate. So the four-seventy went out. We got two vendors bidded on it, one with two solutions, another one with three different solutions. The lowest-cost one was disqualified because they didn't follow the layout of the RFP. We asked for a five-year license, and they did a three-year licenses. And then when you add in the other two years, they're no longer the, the cheapest. So we're, now, this E-rate one is slightly different, because for E-rate, you're only allowed to spend so much money. And we have forty-eight thousand left that we can spend. And on that forty-eight is where we get the seventy percent off. So the total project comes to sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. So we can only get seventy percent off of the forty-eight thousand of that. We budgeted sixty percent, because with E-rate, historically, we've been at seventy percent, but it does fluctuate. And we don't know exactly next year if we're gonna be sixty, seventy, or we might go to eighty. We do, Kathy and I have always done sixty percent, because a long time ago, we budgeted seventy, and we dropped to sixty. And when you do bigger projects, it's a big impact. So the net cost to the town would be just under forty thousand, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars is what it comes out, out to.
In, in any of these capital projects, if there's money left over, it just goes back to the town. We, you know, that, they are segregated into those approvals. So if there were funds left in any of these, they'd go back to the town. The next item is the Murphy replacement of the front stairs. Willie, you want to take that one?
Sure.
You know that, you know that's my thing.
I know. Sorry.
So as, as we mentioned before, the, the stairs are crumbling. Our maintenance department have done extensive work on those stairs just to get them safe. The nose that runs along the edging of each stair has been removed and re-drilled and replaced just, just for the safety factor of it. Any questions? We did, there was a question brought up about the sidewalk. The reason why the sidewalk was also added up to the circle is because we're gonna have heavy machinery that's gonna go on the sidewalk. So there's potential cracking and, you know, damage to the sidewalk. So we might as well include that front section of the stairs into the project, just, just in case if we do have issues, then it's, it will be taken care of.
What about the transition piece between the doors, Willie, and the top of the stairs?
Those are, I think that's in good condition. That was not included in the stairs.
So...
Thank you.
So the next item would be the item number twenty-one, which is the replacement of a truck for the maintenance department. Willie, you're up again.
So the truck that we're looking to replace is a two thousand and five Mason flatbed truck. This truck has a lot of rust in the, in the cabin. So when you're sitting in, when you're driving the truck, you can actually see the floor. Big, big health concern, because...
You can see the ground?
Yes. So it's a big, it's a big concern, because you have fuel going into the, the cabin. So the, the guy that drives it has to drive it with the window down. This same truck, ironically, right after the, the presentation of this, of this capital plan, had cracked out during the snowstorm. So thankfully, the, we reached out to Public Works. They were able to give us a hand to finish up the schools. They were, they were, they were done with their run. This is something that won't happen often, based on what they have to take care of on their end. But they were able to spare a couple of guys to help us finish up the properties. That truck is being looked at by our mechanic at the bus garage. So he can fix it, but we're on borrowed time with that truck.
So it's a twenty-year truck?
Yes.
Does this include a plow or not?
Yes. It will, it will include a plow and, and also a salt spreader.
So that's my next question. We have a lot of plows out back. Do we need another plow? Can we take the old plow?
Well, those plows I want to get rid of. We, there are some of those plows that we don't have the trucks for those plows.
I like the sound of that. Okay. All right. So we come with a sander?
Yes.
And a plow?
Yes.
For this price? How long is this price good for?
Probably, we could, we could hold the price. This, this is a company that, this is a dealership that is on the state contract. So we have purchased from the workforce a worth of a...
Each of these also have a, a write-up. If you go to the item number, it'll say it includes the aluminum dump body, new snowplow, pre-stainless steel spreader, salt spreader and whatnot. So each of these, they all have a category, too, that you can look at afterwards if you'd like to peruse that. The next thing is on twenty-eight, and that's a Murphy removal replacement asbestos insulation on pipes.
Yes. So during our mandated walk-through with our asbestos consultant, Mr. Care, this was brought to my attention into the custodial closets at a Murphy. So the insulation that's coming out of the wall tested hot for asbestos. Those pipes have been cut off at some point and no longer usable. So what they recommended was to get this removed as soon as possible. They were, the company that I had come in to give us a proposal, Bestec, who's also on the state contract list, they would have to do extensive work, cut off the brick, remove the insulation and patch it and get that done. So that would cover two areas at Murphy.
What is the new insulation they put on these days?
I believe it's fiberglass.
Fiberglass?
Yes. Next line item. You want me to continue, Kathy? I'll take both.
You can go right ahead.
All right. The Mohican school exterior wall repair. So this is a wall that's three feet by, no, yeah, three feet by eleven feet. It jogs out of the building. It's more so for aesthetics, I believe. It does support a small section of the roof. I don't think it compromises the roof in any fashion whatsoever. It's just that with the weather over time, the bricks not being maintained with either water seal or something, it has failed some of the bricks. I think it, it is important to get it done as soon as possible, but it's something that if we can't get it this year, at least we'd be getting it to next year or next year.
Is this something that can be removed from it?
I don't believe so.
But we don't know.
It's, because it, it, it jogs out of the building, but it supports like three feet of the overhand.
So the last one on the, this year's request is Nick, the MHS switches.
Okay, so I think once October is here, I talked about the technology plan and the five-year expenditure. And the switch replacement for the high school was supposed to happen to actually this school year. But preparing the budget last year, I looked at the whole system and say, we can definitely push that back one year. And that's what we did. The part that, the communication error that we had was, was a capital or general. I just know I put it on my five-year expenditure plan, which you guys all have access to the Google, sharing stuff. And so Kathy realized that it wasn't a capital, so we had discussions that should really be a capital. That price there, the hundred and thirty, is coming from a quote from a vendor that has contracted pricing to replace what we have now to match the system. Can that price go down? Possibly. But I can't, no one would give me a hard price right now on the equipment. And, and other people are running into this problem when you're looking at network and stuff, because it's being built overseas. And they'll give you a quote for thirty days, and that's it, the whole. So I was like, give me a quote right now, if we can buy it. And I said, don't go get special pricing right now, if you're not gonna hold it until July, because that's when we would be able to purchase it. I said, I'll come back to you and hit you up with that. So his actual quote was slightly more as like one thirty-five, so I put in the one, one thirty. Do we need these switches right now? Will we function another year or two? Yes, but I put this caveat out. Right after COVID, the year that we're out, when we came back, we had to put some new wireless in. We spent a lot of money on switches, because our current switches were twelve, fourteen years old. If we don't start replacing our switches, we're gonna end up where we were before. And I know the board at the time said, we need to come up with a plan to stabilize this. So the plan is, and that, that expenditure plan is, we do the high school one year, we're gonna do the middle school the following year, and then the elementary schools. The elementary schools, we can split up. We can do two elementary schools, the elementary school in Palmer. We can break that, so it's a four-year, year plan. So it's really up to the board. We can go down the path of not, not doing this, pushing it off again. But I, I might come up to you one, at one point and say, we just lost a switch, we just lost another switch. And I don't want to put us in that predicament, because now we have void phones. So if the switches start failing, we could lose phones in that area of the building. So that's why we have the switches in there. And I just felt it was important that everyone knew the background of what we did before and where we're at right now.
So that was the last project for this fiscal year request. I don't know if you want to talk about the rest, or you just want to leave it at this year and then go from there? Or you want to ask specific questions about some of the projects? We'd be happy to answer any of those.
I'm personally fine leaving it this year. I would like to know, Willie, when's the expiration date of those underground tanks at the bus garage?
I believe it's twenty-twenty-seven. So it's a thirty-year state mandate.
So if it's, I'm just trying to look at this. You said twenty-twenty-seven?
Is it July?
I'm sorry?
I, I thought it was twenty-sixth. Me, too. No, it says twenty-twenty-seven.
Twenty-sixth. That's what I was told, twenty-twenty-seven.
Yeah. So we can push that one out.
So that's my recommendation to the board. That will bring us down to a cool million dollars, and maybe we can carve a little more out, but that's...
Well, didn't you say that we might be able to filter a free grant? Well, we waited even in the next year. It's a full construction grant. They're not gonna take that away. If it qualifies for this year, it'll qualify for the next. But that wouldn't take, I mean, it'd take away from the request, but seventy percent of that would be in the next fiscal year.
Right, I'm just looking at it.
And I would like to verify that that is, you know, it's not prior to the twenty-seven.
Yeah, for some reason, I thought the night we were up there, for some reason, I thought that was twenty-twenty-sixth.
Me, too. I feel like we heard that.
Yeah, we should double check.
Oh, it says it was twenty-nine seventy, replacement twenty-four. I have it in the wrong year? It says it in the write-up, but I do want to verify that.
Rather than send it to the store, yeah, we could, we could verify.
Could, could you please, please, yeah. I think we have to go with the truck. I mean, we can't have maintenance running around, Fred Flintstone-ing the truck around the neighborhood. I mean, that's just not right. I'm laughing, because it just, I think it's so absurd sometimes that we not, I don't know, sometimes we just do things that... That's a long time for a Mason dump, twenty years. I can tell you, that's a, we got our money out of that truck.
The plow is sold.
Right, that, we got our money out of that truck. How do you guys feel about the switches? Nick, this is in your five-year tech plan, right?
Yep.
Okay. Which we did ask Nick to put together for us, so we wouldn't put us, find ourselves on life support again, like we did during COVID. Which we did ask Nick to put together for us, so we wouldn't put us, find ourselves on life support again like we did during COVID.
Have any of those switches failed? Did you have it replaced or do...
No, not yet. So we did have one at Tile lose its settings when we had a power blip. Were able to restore from a backup of the configuration file and so far it's holding. I had my tech unplug it, like, like we lost power just to make sure it, it held it, and it did. So I don't know if that's a sign or if that was just a, a fluke. Um, but that, one switch is actually a newer switch than what we have here at the high school. So, uh, we haven't had any fail yet.
Oh, well, the newer switches last.
Um, if we get the switches, if the models just release, they can go seven to eight years. It depends on the transition of models. If we're buying them towards the end, then they might only last five or six years. But also the price is cheaper too. So...
But next year, the year after, they won't spend that much.
Yeah, they, it can be, yeah. And I, I'm, I'm keeping my fingers crossed that when we do this in July, I'm not, Diane and I are not coming back to you saying that, all right, we said it once, one thirty, because of what's happened in the world, it's now gonna be one forty, one fifty. I hope, hope not. And we'll have to come up with a plan to, to come across to get, work that out, to figure out what we're gonna do.
So, the point, the point is, we asked you to put this in the IT plan.
Yep.
You did.
Yep.
Specifically asked you as a board to do that. I was brand new on the board at the time.
Yep.
This is your plan.
Yes.
So we don't know for sure how long they're gonna last.
Right now. Yes, right, the end of life support for them. We got another two years, I think, on the ones that are here at the high school. So that's why I'm saying we can push it down. But as we push it down, we, we're gonna, we're kicking the, the bucket, the can down.
Because everything we do in IT is a hundred grand.
It's all.
Next thing you know, we're up to a half a million dollars and we're starting all over again. And that just defeats the whole purpose of the IT plan.
Yeah.
And if we push this off, we would then be pushing tiles?
Yeah, and we would end up pushing everyone back. Can I share a little good news about the Chromebooks?
Yes.
All right, so for Chromebooks, I was telling Diane, I was looking at, um, in that five-year plan, you're gonna see, I updated it, that we would need Chromebooks after this coming budget cycle, but the next one, we can actually push that out another year. So we, so, uh, when they expire, so that will be a savings down the road for us. And we're working on a, a plan to stabilize how we purchase those. But I just want to throw that little, make sure I know this. So trying to squeeze what we can, where we can. So...
That is, that is good. No, that's really good. That's good. That's a volleyball coach. I mean, like, this is good, good meeting. What do you think about the switches?
I think we should do it.
Tim?
Do it now or just having to be forced to do it later?
Agreed. Gina?
I agree.
I agree too. I think we agree on this side of it.
I think we should submit a whole capital plan and see where the chips lie after. And talk about priorities.
That's what I was gonna say.
And talk about priorities. I think all of this stuff was really good to me. It's all the needs of our district. I think we put it forward, see what happens.
Because if we don't request it now, then push it off, it's something we have to do next year. If we need to cut the capital plan, then we'll go with what number we get. But right now, these are all needs, you know, for everybody. I mean, it's...
Well, we have an opportunity to save almost four hundred thousand dollars if indeed the tank stuff need to be replaced right away. So I agree with Lisa on this and, and Bob, I agree with you. How's the rest of the board feel about this?
Let's keep the tanks in because if we need to pull...
No, we'll leave it all in. But it's, it's a nice, nice deal if we don't have to do it. All right, I'll make the motion, excuse me, to, um, approve the Board of Education's five-year capital plan, twenty twenty-five. We're not approving that five-year plan. We're approving one year.
So you're approving the five. You're approving the five. You are approving the five. You can change it because you're gonna...
Yeah, fair enough. You're, you're correct. Twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty.
As presented.
As presented, right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, hearing none? Thank you very much. All right. That concludes this business. Before we leave, I'd like to just acknowledge, this is Kathy Lambert, the last meeting. I have been with, uh, working with Kathy for twenty-five years, off and on as a citizen in other venues. Uh, she's always been very good to me. I've never had to file an FOI request. If I wanted to know something, she'd give it to me. I, I, right, Kathy? I was just, I was just a citizen asking questions and, um, I, I appreciate her dedication to the school district. Thirty years is a long time, you know? I thought twenty years in the military is a long time. Thirty's a long time. It's dedication, it's obligation, and it's a real sincere effort of one's, uh, commitment. So that said...
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, I want to thank you very much. And we wish you the very best and, um, fair winds in following seas.
Thank you very much.
Now, do we need Nick to begin with? We do not. We do not. Our next meeting will be on the eighteenth, our regular scheduled meeting.
So I would just, you know, Kathy's been instrumental, um, in this budget process, so thank you, Kathy. And I do want to just ask John to do a little wave over there. This is John Spang. He will be our interim, um, business manager, has been working with Kathy. Um, so he will be supporting us in the transition. Thank you for coming, John. And John was here last week as well.
Thanks.
So no meeting next week. I want to thank the board very much, um, for your support during this with my first, um, proposed budget. Thank you very much. I appreciate your support and your questions because, um, it was really good when it was...
It's a good meeting. All right. We have a motion to adjourn.
Good move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.